We'll start the meeting. Could we do a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
I'm here.
Yes. Yes, I'm here. Okay, are there any public comments?
Mayor, I don't have any public comments, but I would like to announce that the town center as of today is the entire site is essentially open to the public. All the streets are open for pedestrians and vehicles coming through the site. We've had a number of folks come through already today. They're very pleased with the way it looks and feels. The library is in there almost twice their normal staff, working on setting that up for their grand opening, which is scheduled for Saturday at noon.
Nice job, George.
And is the lane opened on El Camino?
That is to come down either tomorrow or Thursday or Friday.
Okay, great.
It wasn't open this morning.
No, it's it's we have to schedule a contractor.
And they have a plaque that spelled bullying.
They do. That is out.
Three tries.
Thinking again.
Okay, so there being no public comments. No, Anne didn't indicate that she had a public comment. Anne, you're the only non-member of the council or staff present. So you get to speak anytime you want.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I might have some minor questions when you go on through the budget, but nothing outside of that.
Great, okay.
And just for the record, Mayor DeGolia, and this is for the public, but the council did not meet in closed session today, and there is no report.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, can we move on to the review of the budget?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the public. Before before you is the review of the 2022-23 town budget, all funds changes only. You have the staffer report before you. This is just a discusses changes that's made to the budget since our last study session of the city council. So I brief highlight fiscal year 2223 general fund revenues are projected at seven at 19.5 million against expenditures of 17.7 million. It reflects a single year surplus of 1.85 million before the addition below the line of ERAF and transfers in and out to CIP. There's a projected year end fund balance in the general fund of 12.56 million. Within the staff report, there were some changes that were listed. One in particular, as you all, the council remembers, we went over the town financial planning model. And it was re staff had recommended that council consider the use of unallocated general fund revenues to be reviewed and appropriated towards operations, capital projects, or to pay down liabilities. As you are aware, we've contributed 5 million to CalPERS funded pension liabilities earlier this year in April. And the council also discussed reduction of operational reserve from 20% to 15%. That is listed here in the staff report. Also, since last study session, staff has allocated 3.3 million of general fund monies into the 2323 budget for CIP projects in the town capital project fund for drainage bike pad and park master plans. One highlight, we did increase the excess ERAF for since our last budget reiteration. It was increased to 2.3 million. As you all are aware, the state legislation is in process that they're proposing that a county that has insufficient funds to pay for their mandated property taxes and lieu funds. To close the gap, they will be redirecting excess to these VLOF funds. So state legislation proposes that excess ERAF be capped at the 2122 fiscal year 2122 ERAF allocations to cities and agencies. And any excess ERAF growth afterwards will be set aside to pay for insufficient VLOF amount. If they're still insufficient VLOF amounts, those counties will have to do what they're currently doing now and file a claim with the state for the shortfall. So if this passes legislation in the next month, the county excess ERAF capped at 20 at the 2122 fiscal year. So our amount that we received was 2.3 million. So staff has amended our budget to from the 1.6 million to 2.3 million in this iteration of the budget. So if the cap does happen, the county estimates by 203031, we will receive about 4.27 million. That would be our unadjusted ERAF. So we would lose the growth between the 2.3 million and the 4.27 million in the future years. So that is just an update to the council. The council is aware, they sent a letter to an opposition to the state regarding this letter to this VLA, the state's VLF obligation using excess ERAF funds. Real quick, the Department of Budget changes, the summary, there was a increase of 133,000 in detailed revenue, revenue expenditures, reminder increases to franchise fees and alarm permit fees. And again, the 760,000 increase in ERAF that was noted just right now. There was an overall reduction in department expenditures of 78,000 within the total town departments. This attributed to the allocation adjustments and employee benefits expense and reduction in workers' compensation allocations. So then there's a net decrease in the police department of 75,000 and administration building, public works department. Net a decrease of 2,000 636 for the total reduction of 78,000 in expenditures for the general fund. Also included in the staff report during the CIP study session, there were suggested priority changes directed by the council towards the CIP program. There are minor changes and updates to the drainage and bike pad master plan project based on council direction. So within the staff report on page 14, the CIP program booklet, the streets and transportation, we have updated to include, there was a reduction of 150,000 in parcel tax as it was moved to drainage improvement program funding. So measure A funding was increased from 150,000 to 175,000 for streets and transportation programming. In page 15, the CIP program, the bike and pedestrian master plan was updated to include the Watkins Avenue pedestrian improvements. And this is from the Middlefield Road to McCormick Lane estimate was 100,000. It is increases measure A funding from 100 to 200,000.
Just to note, that's the entire length of the Watkins pathway.
Train tracks.
Yeah.
And then page 20 of the CIP program booklet, the drainage improvements program. It was updated to include the evaluation, the Stockbridge Avenue, Selby Lane, Almond Drive intersection with El Camino Real. The estimate was 100,000. This increases the parcel tax funding to 250,000. Just want to note that the town capital improvement plan was was presented to the planning commission at its May 25, 2022 meeting. And the planning commission made a determination that the town CIP for fiscal years 2223 through 2627 is consistent with the town's general plan. Again, just want to reiterate, based off of the summary resulting in a single year and your single year positive but balance of 1.8 million and a total ending fund balance of 1.8 million. Again, this includes the below the line of 2.3 million. Update of ERAF, our budgeted debt service payment, 861,000 transfer out of CIP project, capital projects, funding of 3.3 million. And then this includes a total with all those included, this includes a single year negative fund balance of 31 30 negative change of fund balance of 31,000 for the general fund. One thing to note was discussed about the reserve calculations. We have a 30 current 35% reserve reserve requirement. It was communicated that the budget stabilization of 20% 20% be reduced to 15% at the last stats study session. So can staff has made that adjustment. So now we are from a 35% reserve requirement to a 30% reserve requirement. So now the 20% is now a 15% budget stabilization reserve. And with that, this this decrease also increases the unallocated fund balance by approximately 886,000. So in the projected budget, the unallocated available ending fund balance for 2223 is 7.2 million. Again, the council with council direction and allocated reserve balance can be allocated to capital projects, operational use, or to pay down liabilities. And just want to reiterate in the staff report, there's a table that reflects the ins and outs of the revenues and expenditures. All our obligations and our projected and fund balance of 12.5 million. We will we we will meet our new 30% reserve requirement. And that total reserve requirement ends up being 5.3 million of our 12.5 million. With as discussed earlier, are less above reserve requirements, our total unallocated balance will be 7.2 million for the projected ending fiscal year 2223. We meet our reserve requirement by 57%. Our unallocated balance is 57% of projected expenditures for the budget. That concludes the staff report. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, so I want to thank, I want to thank you for specifically enumerating the improvements to Watkins Avenue pedestrian on middle from Middlefield to the touring tracks. And that's wonderful. My only question is related to what I raised, I think, the last study session, which is I'm not sure $100,000 is going to do much of anything. I think to do it right, it will take a lot more money than that. But have we decided we're just gonna, you know, put a Band-Aid on it for now? Or I I'd love to understand the long-term plan because I'm just worried that if we just spend 100,000, then it's going to get a little bit better, but we'll never go the full, you know, nine yards.
Well, the the proposed project does not include covering of that channel or extending the roadway into the channel. All it does at this point is evaluate putting in a erasing the area for a complete sidewalk from Watkins down to from Middlefield down to the railroad tracks. So that's the pedestrian way. And then the roadway is a class three bikeway.
Wait, just so are you saying that that amount would cover the resurfacing of that walkway?
Robert, what's the?
So.
Can you use a mic? I can't hear you.
Just make sure it's turned on.
Sorry. So we had proposed originally to have fencing improvements along Watkins, along Watkins. And so with the feedback from the last council meeting, study session, we were asked to look at the walkway. And in looking at it, we really can't widen it into the channel. It would, number one, be very expensive, but it would also trigger a whole bunch of permitting requirements. And so there was an expressed concern about the curb along the roadway and how it's just kind of a raised curb with a depressed walkway next to it. In reviewing the walkway, it actually goes from down at the bottom of the curb to the top of the curb and back down again. And so the intent in essence is to basically fill it up. So it'll be more like a raised sidewalk along that curb.
I don't understand.
I don't see what that would.
Hello, would that would be terrible. You know, you're not going to put some kind of a guardrail or something on.
A guardrail.
A bicycle or somebody can just excuse me, through the chair. I'm I'm just discussing. Because I drove down there the other day with someone in my car and, you know, they wow, you know, because there was this bicycle that was kind of weaving and it looked like it was going to come over onto Watkins. You know, because it was in that area where there's no lip on the sidewalk. It's just kind of a rolled area like to come right off. Are you thinking that you're going to completely raise that? So it's, I don't understand.
A normal sidewalk has a curb.
Right, yes.
The roadway.
Yeah.
And Watkins is a class three bikeway, shared bicycle lane. And so they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk. They're supposed to be in the
On the road.
On the road is a class three bikeway. And so it's creating a normal sidewalk along the along the channel. Is all.
And so no bikes are supposed to be on that sidewalk.
It's a class three bikeway. They're supposed to be in a roadway.
You're gonna cut, cut.
That's terrible.
The hump and make it square.
It's just gonna be a normal curb filled in.
Yeah, that's good. And I think that that'll be a big improvement for bicycles.
So so just to clarify, the $100,000 that is in the budget will.
We're hoping that that's enough to basically fill in, basically raise the asphalt from behind the curb up to curb level.
So will the curb not change? The curb will remain.
Change.
Unless you want to shave it off.
Unless you want to have it shaved off. Trying to cut it may impact the integrity of it, but we can certainly look at that.
So the purpose of cutting the curb off is because.
Just to give it a more, right now, it's kind of battered. It's got a little bit of a slope to it.
Yeah, I understand, but it kind of is a preventative of somebody, you know, just rolling off onto the street in a well, what about, you know, little buggies and child carts and stuff?
I mean, a normal sidewalk doesn't have a barrier on it either.
I don't know. It's a pretty busy street.
Well, the normal sidewalk has it's usually a little planting area.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, like a swale or something. And I I'm not sure that that sidewalk is, how is it four feet in width?
We're trying to maintain a minimum width of five feet.
You have to move the fence?
Not much. I think most of the areas, the fence is pretty much right there, but we're replacing the fence anyway.
But you can't move the fence into the channel.
Understand.
Too expensive and the roadway can't be widened.
I think shaving the the curb is the right thing for the bicyclists that'll be in the street. And raising the sidewalk and making it just sidewalk is is going to improve it for the pedestrians. And but shaving it is, I think, is the right thing to do.
If we replace the entire curb, Robert, if we replace the entire curb, would it have what council member Lewis is thinking of as a gutter?
If you replace it with a concrete curb and gutter, but that in essence kicks into the it takes off about a foot or foot and a half from the roadway.
On the roadway.
And there really hasn't been much of a drainage problem there as far as I recall.
Right. I think the concern is that there's if there's, there's usually a a perceived, the perception of a of a space between the vehicles and the people on the sidewalk. On a normal sidewalk, you got the the flat curb, then you got a gutter, and then you got the vehicles or so away from the sidewalk.
I think what we can do is I think most of that curb is painted white right now. And I think that we can reinstate that, make sure that it stands out.
Yeah, why don't we create, we can create a design and then we'll come back and.
And you and you indicated that you're going to replace that fence. Do you know what you're replacing the fence with?
No, that's a design that's coming back.
That'll be coming back to council for feedback.
Okay.
So just to be clear, the $100,000 in the budget is both to create the sidewalk and to replace the fence?
No, we augmented, we had originally, I think, 150 for the fence. And then so the extra 100 is to deal with the sidewalk.
I think you'll have to come back with a change order. I know mine did the same thing.
Chair's going down.
So grab one of those chairs. You can be better.
I think there's one right over there under the, but he doesn't have a pillow, so he might be shorted.
So my concern is if you leave, my recollection, because I live close to Watkins, and so I use that road quite a bit. And it's, it is slanted. And I don't know if there's a flat spot on top or not, but but it's it's not a straight up and down curve like you would have on a normal sidewalk. My concern is that one or two, at least two things could happen, which wouldn't happen as easily with a regular curb. One is a car can go up the ramp and on to the sidewalk, go on to the sidewalk. Whereas when it's a flat 90 degree angle to the roadway, it's less likely that a car is going to veer and go up on the sidewalk. It's still possible, but it's a lot less likely than if you have a ramp up to the sidewalk, which is what you'll have if you don't redo the the curb. And the other thing that was mentioned, I believe, at the last study session was with respect to bicycles. And I don't, I guess there's really nothing you can do because since we can't widen it and we're not going to use the the drainage ditch, which is unfortunate, but I guess we can hope for another day, maybe on that one.
Look at the design and.
We were going to cut, cut the the rounded curve so it is straight up and down. And.
Yeah, I say we can cut it a bit. My concern is that asphalt, unlike concrete, isn't really meant to be straight up and down. So it's still going to have to have a little bit of a slant. But we can try and we'll look at and see how we can kind of.
Now, the alternative is rebuilding it entirely out of concrete, which would increase the cost. It's something we could evaluate.
I wouldn't, why couldn't you make the sidewalk decompose granite? Would that decrease the cost so that we could do the curbing properly?
We can evaluate that. I'm not quite sure how much it might decrease because there's areas of the existing sidewalk that are elevated that we'd have to remove as well.
Well, I appreciate bringing this up. And I appreciate you bringing this up because it is a concern. And I'm afraid that we're going to spend good money after something that's a real Band-Aid and not a good fix.
Well, it sounds like the first step is to design it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
We have signage says no bikes at each end of the path and each of the entry points. I don't think I remember. See.
But you're right.
We don't have signage that says no bikes, but it's, do we have charros on that roadway?
There are charros.
Charros on the roadway, yeah.
There's what?
There's charros on the roadway.
Shows a bike.
But nothing that says you shouldn't have a bike on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And if a bike is on that road, they're going slower than the 25 miles an hour. And so there's not enough room for the bike and a car behind it and cars coming at you the other way. So.
You slow down.
Every road in Africa.
Well, yeah, but not that long stretch of a road.
You need to give the bicyclists three feet as you pass. So if you can't pass with three feet, then you don't pass.
That's right.
You just help these fast.
Give them a nudge to get going. No, okay.
And don't honk.
And no honking. I have a comment about the ERAF, the ERAF and that whole thing because it looks like what they're trying to do is lock us in to an amount for another 10 years. Is that right?
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, yes.
So we would lose the annual difference between whatever we're locked in at and whatever that growth is, just like they did with your, you know, prop. Prop 13, yeah, where they lock us in at a particular amount.
That's right.
Lost the difference where when ERAF was created in the first place.
Right. So we wrote a letter of opposition.
Two.
Two. Good. Two is better than one. Other cities across the country, I mean, state, I'm sure have read the same one. And so what do you think the result's going to be? I mean, is Fiona kind of come back?
There's a lot of pressure, but there's only, is there six counties now?
I think there's six or five.
Five or six counties in the state that are that that receive ERAF back.
Right, yeah.
So the.
So.
Yeah.
I got it. When I started in council, the ERAF dispersment was funding was about 900,000. So that was 2008. So going up to 2.3 million, and we've always underestimated it, you know, in our budget. And I don't know, it seems like 2.3 is a a good amount.
It's an increase from what what Robert was putting in.
Exactly, exactly.
Because we always, in the back of our minds all these years is they're gonna come after.
Take it away.
So that's why we made the decision to move it below the blind.
Right.
And use it as one time, you know, for capital projects. It helped major funding for this town center.
Right.
The catch of this current trick that the state's trying to pull, though, is they're paying us back with our own money. So ERAF belongs to us locally, and they're trying to backfill
Right.
A revenue that they shorted us with our own cash.
There ought to be a law. Like your vice mayor.
Yeah. So as I was going through the detail, I realized this isn't something we can solve here, but I want to put kind of a marker on it perhaps for Park and Rec or just the council as we move forward with fee studies and things like that. I know we're going to redo a lot of fees because of our overhead structure. But when I was looking at the the park revenue fees and the admin markup for residents and non-residents, it does seem out of line with regards to what other towns are doing. There's a substantial markup. You use the facilities over at Menlo Park and you're not a resident. There's a substantial markup. If if you can even use the facilities in parts of Palo Alto, you know, they want you to be a resident. So I would hope that we would take a look at that. You know, I don't think that the 15%, hopefully that covers our markup. But I think that if you're a non-resident, I would hope that that should be at least 50% or something like that. Perhaps Park and Rec could do a survey and and come back with a recommendation on as we're raising other fees, come back with a a potential change for that. Don't just leave that as it is. So that was my comment. Thank you very much.
Can I just add something to that vice vice mayor? I think that's a really, really good point. It would be interesting to me to understand how much revenue is really derived from our residents and how much revenue is dependent on people outside of the town. Because it could be an imbalance. And if we chase those other people away, then maybe we'll tip over. And as our, what we want is to encourage more residents to use the facilities at a reasonable fee. And if they can't use those facilities because other outside residents are using the facilities at a lower fee, then, you know, we need to erase that. Right. Does that make sense? You're very concerned about what I'm saying.
No, but there's some assumptions there. I think, so I I'd like to just stop on this issue because I want to see what the sense of the whole council is.
Yeah.
This is something Park and Rec has dealt with, and I actually think Park and Rec was inclined to reduce the difference rather than increase the difference. So this is important feedback to them. The information about how much of the rental income comes from residents versus non-residents is totally available. That's reported every month. And it it's substantially more non-resident than resident. And that's partly because the facilities rentals tend to be rented for big events like weddings or corporate events. And and that while there are some weddings that are done, you know, for residents or their children, most of them aren't. And, you know, you can hypothesize why, but that's the way it is. I don't think it's that there are residents wanting to use the facilities that aren't able to do so because they're rented by non-residents.
I think I was thinking more about the tennis courts, maybe.
Oh, well, the tennis court's a whole different situation than the buildings.
Okay.
Very, very different. The tennis courts are more used by residents, vastly more used by residents than non-residents.
So I think that, first off, you know, the park and the fees for the park and the coverage of the park of the of what it costs to run that park are borne by the town. And I think that the park needs to be available for people in the town. I understand what the Park and Rec was suggesting, and even my conversation with a member of the Park and Rec just kind of in general was that they want to increase, as you pointed out, the increase, you know, make the park be full all the time. And I don't think that that's, that's not my vision. My vision is is the park is there. We need to encourage our residents to use it. Yes, it should be available. I understand, like, for example, weddings and things like that. Very few residents use that the pavilion for that. It's the same as with the play school. Very few residents have kids go to the play school, yet we continue to have those. That's fine. I'm not suggesting there's a big problem with that. But on the weekend, when people want to go, I do get comments from people saying, well, you know, I always go to the I do get comments from people saying, well, you know, I always go to the North Meadow and have a picnic, or I always do this or always do that. And bingo, there was a, you know, a big event going on or there were a lot. It was already packed, you know. The picnic areas, when it was under the trees, was always, you know, like on a Sunday morning or even a Saturday morning, all the picnic tables were cordoned off by one person for a family get together. And it didn't look to me that those just looks, but it is, it appeared to me that perhaps they weren't necessarily Atherton residents. And so obviously, you know, the fee, the fee structure that we have with MCE going around and asking people for permits is one thing, but I do believe that you know, the park should be open and people, it should be available for people just to walk up to and go to, but but I'm not interested in making sure it's rented out all the time. That I don't think that that's been the vision of this council for quite a long time. Maybe it's changed, but it was never the vision of that. I think that the Park and Rec Committee, at least as was relayed to me by by one member, seems to be contrary to what what our discussed previous discussions have been. And I think that we need to correct that.
The I can give you some anecdotal information for April, if you want to address Councilmember Lewis's issue. There's there were 15 rentals in April. That's day use and facility. Eleven of those were day use. Of the remaining four facility rentals, only one was a resident. Of the 11 day use rentals, only one was a resident.
That's that's very, very typical. I think that's a good description, although anecdotal, that's my impression, and I look at it every month when I'm at the Park and Rec Committee. So I would support what the Vice Mayor said in that the principal goal isn't to have the park rented every opportunity. I think we do get a great return on the park when you compare our return from rentals versus costs, what percentage of our costs are covered by rentals is extremely high for Atherton compared to other municipal parks. So I don't feel the need to increase that revenue. I'm interested in keeping the facility competitive in terms of what pricing we put it at. But it doesn't bother me if it's not rented all the time. I think that's fine. In fact, I think it makes it more attractive to Atherton residents. I think the issue of what percent increase we should ask non-residents to pay is a serious question that I mean, and Bill has said he thought it should be closer to 50%. I think it's 30%.
It's 15 and 30 right now, 15 for not for residents and 30% overhead for non-resident.
Wait, say that again.
It's a 30% overhead for non-resident and a 15% overhead fee for residents.
So it's just 15% higher.
So and, you know, as was brought to before, the fee will be reorganized a bit to simplify so that the administrative overhead charges is basically built big built into the rate. And so when we come back with the fee adjustment at at the time of the budget, you'll be able to see a difference, the actual difference in the resident versus non-resident rates for the different things. And if you so choose to make adjustments to that, you're welcome to do so.
So there'll be a resident fee and a non-resident fee, but there won't be any percentage. Because it used to be that we just retained the percentage and we split the other fee and now we got 100% of the other fee.
Yeah. So the recommendation by the Park and Rec Committee was to simplify it and just have a flat hourly rate. One rate for residents and one rate for non-residents.
So you'll be able to adjust those. And these are rental facilities, so there's no cost recovery concern at all. You can charge whatever market allows.
Yeah, we just need to know what the market is and then residents need to have a discount and the other people can pay a little bit more. That's all.
Right. I mean, my, this just got, I'm interested in other people's opinions. My gut is we should try to have the non-resident rate be whatever the going commercial rate would be for this facility. So it's a competitive rate. And I'd like to see the resident get a discount of 25 or 30%. I think residents, it is our tax dollars that are paying.
Well, I just, Bob, did you want to say something at this point?
No.
Okay, so I can recall when there was a time that the town had to completely support all of the maintenance and the the whole expense of the park. And, you know, we we had a lot of heavy overhead because we had employees on staff. We had, you know, all that that was. So when we got rid of that, it seems to me that we're in a better position now financially because with the increase in rentals and the increase in popularity, a lot of outside people paying more, that the park revenue really defers almost 100% of its annual costs.
No, not anywhere close.
More like 60%.
60%.
60 to 65%.
Okay.
And it's been substantially down over the last couple of years.
Well, yeah, that was right, but.
Because of COVID.
Right. And so we're a couple of years ago, we were almost.
Not 100. There's differences. It's very complex to review the the finances because it's broken into different buckets.
Right.
And it's not easy to follow. It's never been 100%, but it but anything over 30% is a big.
Yeah.
Return compared to other municipal parks. I think it's been in the 60 to 65% range at the best.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Other agencies, their cost recovery on their parks is not even close. It's it's.
Nothing.
They don't. They don't break even. I mean.
No.
50%, probably 30.
30. 30 is the average. Yeah.
But we have great aspirations for continuing to, you know, maintain the park and, you know, make it.
Non-residents in there.
Uh, there are. That's unusual. Most jurisdictions let non-residents in. I mean, I know Palo Alto at Foothill had a big issue around it.
Oh, yeah.
But I think we should address it. So given the restructuring of the fee, then the issue before us on this little point is what's an appropriate discount for residents?
We'll make sure that we have in the past. We'll make sure in this year's budget as well, we'll include that single-page revenue expenditure summary, profit and loss for the park in the budget packet.
Okay.
Just so the council has awareness of that.
See it here.
No, it's not.
Right now, it sounds like it's the difference is 15%. That's the discount for residents.
So I said, the discount was in the overhead rate. But I said, as we bring it forward to you, it will be, we'll make it clearer as to what that discount is.
Yeah, there was one fee and then also it was the administrative markup.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the budget? I'll just, I I've got one, which is, you know, when this is a big budget, I mean, for us, it's a big budget, but not for some cities. And when you look at it at this level, really what jumps out at you are where numbers change. Right. That, I mean, I, we can focus on a single topic like Ann brought up the pedestrian path, or we've just talked about the resident discount in the park. But just looking over the budget, you look, you, I see the things that jump out at me are significant number changes year to year. And I'd just like to raise a couple of them and understand because I don't, I don't fully understand them. One is I, I, I think I know the answer to this, but the I'm looking at page 38 of 82. This this deals with the park, which we were just talking about. This is DW, DPW Park Maintenance and Building Improvements. We significantly, the the actual in 2020 was $2,500. Last year's budget was 160,000. And the recommended budget for this coming year is 180,000. And I think that's because we've got significant improvements in the Carriage House. We did some, and we did some improvements in the restrooms and the pavilion.
Yeah. So we had the Pavilion Restroom Project. We've budgeted and we're carrying it over the restrooms in the Carriage House. There are miscellaneous other repairs and things that have been tracked, like we just had to replace the HVAC at the Carriage House. We had the stove at the Carriage House. But we're also gearing up for a few other I call them different maintenance items. I think one example, again, in the Carriage Houses, the the fans need to be replaced. There's some painting in different spots that need to be taken care of. So there's a variety of building maintenance and other needs that we need to address.
Okay, there's no detail about that in here.
We have some in other backup documents. It may not be.
And these are the summary rollups.
This is a summary rollup.
Yeah. That answer your question.
That that addresses that question. Another DPW issue is I'm just looking again at the numbers as they change on page 40 of 82. The contract custodial services, maybe this is because of the town center, but in 2020, it was $32,000. The budget for the last year was 108,000, the but or 106,000. The budget for the next year is 200,000.
Yeah. I were going from having to maintain and clean trailers to having to maintain and clean the civic.
That's what I.
And that's just not for the park. That's for the whole project.
No, that's not the park. That's DPW in general.
Good. Okay.
So I would say there's, I mean.
But it's not the library, I don't think.
No, not the library. So there's been an incremental change as we've moved into this building.
Which is what last year's budget was.
Yeah.
And to add to that, there was COVID cleaning that was a little higher in some areas that were starting to drop off that we had to do in 2020, 2021, as well as 2122.
Okay, then if I can just continue, because these are the things that jump out at me. And in the police budget, and I'm looking at page 44, there are three things that jump out at me. One is line 040, which is equipment replace charges. It went from 55,000 to 141,000 to 214,000. And I'm not sure what the relationship to that is, but the line 040 under maybe it's just depreciation. I guess the next set of document, not numbers down, vehicles and accessories goes from 45 to 141 to 170. So we're obviously adding some vehicles.
Correct. And it's an allocation of two and a half vehicles. I'm one and a half, sorry, vehicles. So the allocation is 175,000.
What do you do a half a vehicle?
Like one, it's the it's the annual allocation that would draw down from each of the independent departments that goes into this number. It's not the actual price of vehicles, the vehicles for purchasing. It's the set aside that we use to track over time.
So the is the 55,000 one vehicle and the 141,000 was two vehicles and the 214,000 is three vehicles?
No, not, no, it's it's a combination of the numbers that we actually draw from each department based on the estimate of what vehicles are aging at what time. And then there's also in this equipment replacement charge, not just vehicles, there's the speed trailer and some smaller equipment that the PD purchases as well in each department. And those are usually itemized each year's purchases within the the budget detail that comes forward. I think this time around it was.
They bought some tongues.
There was somewhat.
And did you guys buy some tongues?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. And in the in the previous budget study session in April, the April 6th study session in in that staff reported list now that was in so 175 accounts for purchase of 1.5 vehicles within the police department's expense.
Yeah. And they're the biggest one. They have the fleet, basically. So the bulk of that is vehicles.
So just the final thing that jumped out at me was under, this is I'm not, I think this, yes, this is police. It's 47 of 82. Line item 040. It's employee benefits earned. And in 2020, it was 71,000 and the budget for last year was 125,000 and the budget for next year is 176,000.
Correct.
That's a huge jump.
Well, we increased the allocation from 3% to 4% and it's based off of salaries. So that 175 is based off the off of the regular salaries, dispatch salaries, reserve salaries. So those amounts are part of that earned benefit. And we just changed that allocation at our last study session and it was reiterated in this in the staff report that it went up from 3% to 4% for PD.
Yeah, so people, people that carry over their vacation, that they got a salary increase. And so we have to cover that salary increase because when they use it, they they're charged at that regular time. Yes, I remember being mentioned.
No, I understand that, but 3% to 4% is a one-third increase.
Correct.
And and the salaries, it's addressing a larger salary, but the salary was like a 3% or 4% increase. So, and this is a 66% increase from 2020 to 20 21. And another 60% increase on top of that to 2022. So it's like it's 130% increase to 2022.
I think in 2020, 2021, we added the dispatcher position and code enforcement officer slash dispatcher hybrid position. So there were two additional bodies added with the full salaries for which we had to attribute. So that's where the the change came about within the next fiscal year.
And don't they get a tiered thing? So they here for so many years, they get an extra week of vacation and things like that.
So I guess the question would be if we extrapolate out to the 2324 budget, you know, how much would that increase? And is it just going to go up exponentially?
It's it's a factor of the bodies that we have. And it's just Councilmember Woodman talks about all the time that the pensions that we carry for those bodies and the vacation pay and all that sort of stuff that's connected to it. And then the salaries that those bodies are paid. So as those things change, this number goes up.
It's well worth it, though. Talked in your.
It's no complaint.
Right. No.
It's.
You're doing a very, very good high level analysis of it. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
The when money flows into the CIP fund, I forget the fund number.
406.
It it's expensed to the general fund when it moves there, right? So for example, all the unpaid bills for for this building we're sitting in, including whatever you negotiate on the contingencies. They're already, they've already been expensed. They're not part of this year's budget, correct?
We transferred funds from the general fund as a large transfer, 3. something or 4. something million into the CIP fund 406. And then Robert draws against that fund to pay the bills for the project.
So this this 3.3, whatever, or whatever the exact number was that you moved into the CIP fund or that you plan to move into the CIP fund in this coming year. I'm not going to find a matching project. That's.
No, because it's it's basically that funding is going to the fund 401 and it's it's being expensed based off of the various projects that we have built in over the five-year CIP.
So, but in other words, the the projects that you showed us when we did our initial budget review. So, but in other words, the, the projects that you showed us when we did our initial budget review are gonna, are gonna total up to a fraction of that number. So.
If not more.
Yes, correct, if not more. And, and anything that's in capital project fund is, is what you'll find in the C I P program. Anything in fu- fund four oh one, as you go through the, the master plan, plan projects, anything that says capital improvement program fund, capital improvement fund, that's that fu- fu- fund four oh one that is paying for specific portions of the master plans.
But you, you will find a list for it on, uh, toward the end of that C I P project booklet that Robert was talking about. You'll see the capital improvement fund detailed out, and you'll see a list of specific projects that are drawing from that fund. So that three point three million dollars that was transferred into that fund, you'll see the projects that are drawing from it.
I'll be able to match those?
Yeah. But it may end up, but they may total more than three point three, because there's more of a balance in the fund to draw from.
Correct. Right, that's, that was my first question, just clarifying that. But what I didn't have to compare it to unless I screwed up was the, you know, I was looking at the pie chart that shows the funding and the spending for capital improvements. And I was looking to see that, that in, income to that account.
It won't be, it won't be a, a straight, you know, six million here, six million out.
No, I understand, I understand that, but the four point nine seven five that shows in today's staff report, I don't have anything, I don't have a pie chart to compare that to, but I'm assuming that's three point something million dollars higher than what that pie chart would have looked like when we first started talking about this.
Yeah, and there's under attachment three in that booklet, all the way toward the back is a landscape tables. That'll show you some of that detail.
Yeah.
In, in the original budget. I know, in this.
No, in your.
In this packet here. Toward the back are tables like this.
All right, so you want to walk us.
Capital improvement is on page eighty-one.
On page eighty-one?
Yeah.
You want to walk us through that just real quickly?
So if you find that capital improvement project fund four oh one, which is almost the last page, second to last page of that booklet.
Right. Eighty-one of eighty-two.
Yeah, and so one of the things that you'll find is in addition to the money that you all are allocating out of the general fund. We've added, on the revenue side, we've added grants. Um, and so we have about three hundred thousand for the train station from Caltrain. There's four hundred thousand in the first year from S U for the work on middle, for the project on Middlefield. And so, um, as well as, um, the parks grants for the circulation project. And so those all add to the general fund monies that are being put into the capital improvement program. And then on the expenditure side, you'll see where the money is intended to go to what projects, or at least what programs.
Very good. Makes sense.
So two questions. Want one, the state parks grant?
I didn't know about that.
What was that?
That's in addition to the Stanford grant that we're using for the park circulation element.
Where did that come from?
The, the state, they have a per capita grant allocation that comes out every, every year that we apply for.
We were able to get about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars
Nice.
through that program to allocate towards the project.
You know, what's disappointing is that we don't get very much, uh, many grants from, um, C C A G, you know.
We're small fish.
Do you know what I mean?
We've put.
Or Atherton.
But we put in.
Yeah.
We do, don't you?
Yeah, so, I said, the last grant that we put in through for C C A G was pedestrian improvements at Stockbridge and Alameda. Um, unfortunately, we were not selected for funding.
Right, but didn't we get some from them for the Middlefield Road project? I think. Yeah, yeah, that, that was a couple years ago. Uh, I don't know.
I, on that page, under the expenses, we have the Bay Canal, but there's no allocation to that. Is that because that's?
That's because we've already paid it out.
Fully paid.
But the, the withdrawals are still coming out of our property tax allocation for a set period of years.
From a capital perspective, we've already.
Yeah, because we're paying them back.
Right. It is good to see people walking through the town center out there.
Oh, my gosh, you just take.
Any other questions?
We're, we're just noticing all the people walking through the, the.
Oh, I know.
It's nicer than the park right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, I walked the whole thing this morning. It's really looking good.
The Civic Center, there's a lot of pedestrians coming through, yeah.
Well, we can go do it if we don't have any more questions.
We don't have any motions to make, do we?
I have a comment.
Only a motion to adjourn.
Vice Mayor has a comment. We, we can't adjourn yet.
I did peek at the donor wall, and I'd like to congratulate our donor wall, uh, some committee of
Diana.
And Diana, so you did a great job, and I saw the guy putting, rubbing all the different letters and things like that. I mean, it was a painstaking amount of work, but it really looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for that work.
Thank you, Diana. Yeah, we, we, we looked at a lot of stone. We did not leave any stone unturned.
I believe that.
When we were looking, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
I, I approve. And Mona.
Never vote on that.
See you tomorrow night.
Yes, thank you.
So fun. And Anne, thank you for being here, and your comments are really well taken.
Thank you.
Yeah. Diana, get well.
Get better between today.